Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop and executive session held on July 25th.
I move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Presidential comments?
I have none this evening.
Trustees' comments?
Chief, I had a question for you. If you could ju- I'll use my, use my comments portion to address the fire that they had in the Walkers Grove Playground. If you could just give it a public an update on anything you have.
Yeah, yesterday at about six o'clock, we along with the Plainfield Fire District responded to a, the playground equipment on fire behind Walkers Grove School. Fire Department went there, extinguished it. Our officers that were on duty responded and based on items that they were able to recover from the scene, they were able to track down five juvenile offenders that started the fire and spread to the playground equipment. So, those juveniles have been identified and we're currently working with the Will County Juvenile Division with those offenders. Because they are juveniles, there's not much more information I can give, but suffice to say, we have identified them. And I know the school district is also working diligently to try to get that equipment either replaced or temporary resolved as schools approaching here quickly, so.
Have you heard if they're hoping to get it up before school starts or relatively soon?
I don't think they'll be able to replace the original stuff by the time school starts, but I know they're working on some avenues to try to get some temporary equipment, playground equipment there for the kids to play on.
Thank you.
I don't think the main structure will be ready by the time school starts, no. You're welcome.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this would be the time for public comments? Do you have a public comment? Come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Carol O'Rourke. I live on Wildry Court in Grand Park. And I have a parking concern. I do believe that it's against the law to park on the street overnight?
There are overnight restrictions for parking, yes.
Okay. Because there are regularly cars parked overnight. Also, the just, the general parking situation on our court is, is very bad. The other day, or was it two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, garbage, there were so many cars parked during the day on garbage day that the garbage truck could not pick up our garbage. So, we're hoping that something can be done about this.
I'd be happy to address that real quickly for you, Mrs. O'Rourke. There, we've identified actually about five courts where that exact problem is going on. And as a result, waste management is not able to collect your rubbish or collect your recycling or even your yard waste. And so, as a result, letters are being sent out to all the residents that live on those various courts pointing out that this is an obvious problem and that, hoping that they'll self-police.
Okay.
Absent that, we have already met with the traffic committee. And the traffic committee will take up more expressive ways to handle tra- handle the problem. It sounds, it sounds odd that we would have a traffic committee take a look at a parking problem, but these are the folks that actually make sure that traffic and the like moves through our community and manages properly. So, more than likely, it'll go through the traffic committee and we'll end up having to sign those cul-de-sacs as no parking.
That's what, that's exactly what we were hoping for.
We're hoping for self-compliance because compliance before anything else, this is the best way for us to manage a neighborhood question, but yeah, yours isn't the only one.
Okay.
There are about four others that have been identified recently, yeah.
And one more question regarding noise. Is there a law during certain hours where there can't be excessive noise?
I'll have to learn, turn to Chief Conapek for that, or perhaps Ken Goska. Believe there is an 80 decibel DBA is what we measure, right, Chief?
The decibel level escapes me right now, but there is, there are restrictions based on the time of day and the level of noise, yes. So, if you're having, I can tell you, I don't know, I can't remember the exact hours of the decibel level right now.
But what would the, what would it be about? What would be the level?
It's somewhere, as Administrator Murphy mentioned, about 70 or 80 decibels.
Yeah, but I mean, what, do you know something that's, is that level?
Well, it depends on how close you're to the object. If you're close enough to a lawnmower, that could potentially be over 70 or 80 decibels.
Okay.
So, it depends on your distance from the object and, and again, time of day. So, if it's, you know, if someone's making noise at three o'clock in the afternoon, that's gonna be a little bit more tolerable.
Right.
If they're doing it at three o'clock in the morning, then that's obviously something we're going to address, so.
We're talking about noise between 11 and 12 o'clock, cars.
At night, you're talking about, right?
Cars or motorcycle, yeah. Cars and motorcycles at night.
Well, I can tell you, unless, unless the vehicles have been modified in such a way that they're making excessive noise, most likely just vehicles driving up and down your street are not gonna be legal.
No, 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 this was not just that. I mean, it woke me up and it, my neighbor that lives so, I live right next door, but it, it woke my neighbor down that lives about eight, eight doors down.
Okay. I'll tell you what, I can come talk to you here in a few minutes once, once we get past this, this portion.
Okay.
You know, I just want to add something else to the cul-de-sac. I live there too as well. On the end, there's a model unit, so, and there's no parking for that, so they're using our street as well. And the two empty lots now have been sold and they're gonna start digging foundations, so there's four units per building, so that'd be a total. And if you have a husband and wife, that'd be 16 more cars added to that cul-de-sac. And the traffic coming in and out with the trucks, digging the lots and building, it's really gonna be a nightmare. So, I just wanted to add that to it.
I can speak to you about that in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Now, we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is Drinkell Farm Concept Plan.
You know, and if I may just give a brief introduction, the concept plan that's before the village board this evening is being presented by contract purchasers. It's a couple that's interested in purchasing this property. It's a little bit less than 14.5 acres, an existing farmstead or a farm with a barn and a more modern residence. It's located on the west side of Heggs Road, north of 127th Street, so generally the far northwest quadrant of the village. The applicants are interested in purchasing the property and utilizing it for a business venture as well as a residence, and we'll hear that in more detail. So, it's staff's hope and the applicants as well that we receive some input and direction from the board on whether their business plan, a business proposal is something that you would be supportive of and, and following through with a more formal entitlement application. The barn is in unincorporated Will County, but it's contiguous to the village, so the applicant would need to annex into the village by annexation agreement wherein we could stipulate the specifics of the development approval. And so, at this time, I would invite the applicants, Kurt and Stephanie Watson, to provide a presentation for us and we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you. So, first of all, thank you for the time this evening, all right? So, Stephanie and I, as John stated, have already entered into a contract really kind of contingent upon frankly tonight's meeting for us. So, we tried to lay out a vision of what we see, the use of the property and what we're asking for as part of the annexation agreement into the village. And I guess from there, we'll go through questions and hopefully we paint a picture of the use, what it is and what we would like to do with it. So, for us, you know, some introductions and I'll just move right down into about us and we'll talk about the history of this, this farm. Our vision, we call it 1844, that's the year that, that farm was brought into the family that we're purchasing it from. So, that's what we're referring to our project as at this stage in the game is 1844. So, we'll talk about the mission of that, some planned improvements, obviously much more to come from, from that. And then, the transformation, a little bit around annexation and subdivision and then any open questions or discussion from any of you. So, about us, so Stephanie and I, members of the village, right, have lived here for about eight years. Stephanie's background is in hospitality and event planning. She's also worked in the advertisement field, corporate account management. She's an active photographer and Stephanie has her MBA, her master's in business, myself. I've got a food service background. I currently work for Ecolab in Naperville in their institutional group, which if you're not familiar with is restaurant hospitality and all the things that we're discussing. I've got about 25 years of business experience. I also grew up in a restaurant family, so understand hospitality and food service and beverage service quite well. And then, I've got obviously in my 25 years, operation, sales and change management experience as well. So, our family that resides in the village, Stephanie and myself, Jawal attends North, Kurek, our son, goes to Ira Jones, Lilian at Walkers Grove, so we're also hoping for that playground to be back up and running in no time. And Evelyn who attends kindergarten, she's a little bit ahead of paces, but attends kindergarten locally as well. We live in Dunmore Estates and again, we've been residents for about eight years. So, the property we're talking through, and I've got a video of it that I can show you as well, but is at 12464 Heggs Road. You've got an aerial of the, of the barns and the house there and really it's a squintennial farm that has been within Will County and Wheatland Township, kind of since the beginning, right, since 1844. The barns on the property date back to 1778 and are largely intact. Frankly, they're phenomenal structures considering their age. They're phenomenal structures if you just consider the overall health of them as well. Right, so more of the history along with the, the large barn, and I'll touch on that again, that's really the project. One of the barns, which we named Limestone, is about a 1,300 square foot corn crib that's on the property, just to make sure that you're aware of it. We're not asking for any use of this, this at this time. And there's also a residence that's on the property that we would be in, that was built in 1990. Overlook, which is the, the project and, and part of what we're asking for the village to consider today for its use, was built in 1778 and is a multi-level hay barn. And I'll show you what that looks like here in a couple pictures as well, as well. And we've got planned improvements to improve and restore that historic barn. And again, I'll show you that as well. But as you can see, a pretty, a pretty large venue, we anticipated would hold probably somewhere around 175 people for the use that we're asking for. So, our approach, just to know what we intend to do, right? So, as a business, we're focused on sustainability. Part of this project for us is making sure that these barns stay where they're at and that they continue to prosper in a lot of ways, right? So, our mission is to preserve the history, the lowest impact of the current state. So, while we know that there's needs for many improvements to the barns in order for them to be used for what we're asking for, we also want to be cognizant of the fact that part of what it is and part of the charm of what it is, is the fact that it is from 1878 and, you know, the inner workings of it, as much as possible to remain that they are. And then, really a lot around sustainability, which again, safety being number one for us. And then, our lowest total impact to the current grounds, considering these four core things, right, water, energy, waste and safety is kind of our guiding force. And then, onsite filtration and water, understanding some of the things that'll need to happen there. So, really focused around water, energy, safety and waste. And then, we'll, we'll really look to partner with people that kind of have these same core values, right? I'm sure you know, this approach is, is really where most of your money is spent nowadays. So, most businesses that are considering their total cost of something is looking at an approach similar to this. So, defining our purpose, what we are and what we're asking for today is for us to be able to convert this barn into a historic farm and hall that holds about 175 guests. Obviously, some of that to be determined. Use the outside grounds to experience the country, provide beverage service and event planning onsite, do some seasonal community gatherings and operate as much of a sustainable farm as we can. What we're not, which I think is just important in today's discussion, is this isn't a restaurant and won't have any food service onsite outside of beverage, it's not a bar, and it will not hold normal business hours, meaning that every event would be a planned event at the property. So, we won't see a sign on the road, you know, for, for people to just proceed up and to do anything at any point. So, planned improvements to the, to overlook, right, which is the largest barn on the property, just some basics that we know need to happen in, in conversations. I've got a background, again, in restaurants, so understand some of those pieces, but just to make sure that you're aware, look, from a, a fire suppression system perspective, we understand the importance of that. Major plumbing upgrades need to go into the building, there's little or no plumbing in it today. Electrical upgrades as well, fully aware of the fact that it needs to be handicap accessible and have some early plans for that that we'd incorporate into drawings. Structural improvements, frankly, the majority of the barn is in incredible upkeep as I talked about, but there are some things I think that we would want to address to make sure that we met code or as close to code as we could be. Obviously, a set of onsite bathrooms and then refrigeration sinks, ice machines, beverage service and those things would all be part of that. So, really what we're looking to do, there's the interior of the barn on the left, is convert that into what you see on the right. So, a, a hall for us to gather for weddings and community events, right, family reunions, all those pieces, preserving the history of what's there as well as, you know, really offering something I think to the community that is wildly popular today and doing it correctly, right, as far as I'm concerned. So, it sure would have been easy to walk up to you today and say, like a couple of porta-potties and let's hope for the best, but we don't think that's the plan long-term. We think this plan, doing it correctly, is the way to go, right? We think there's great value in this, in this barn and in this plan. So, additional improvements that we understand will need to happen, we, we would plan on installing some safety gates and other things to make sure that we're able to separate some of the residents from some of the grounds. Again, considering the beauty of the, of the property as much as we can. Major upgrades from a concrete perspective, lighting both on the exterior and parking and of course, on the interior. Gravel parking lot to try to keep as, again, as too original as we can be. Some light audio onsite, probably similar to what we're talking about, talking through here. The ability to do some music, but understanding that there would be some restrictions there. An outdoor patio that we would place, we believe in the right area on the property from a noise decibel, which came up this evening already. And then, bar, and when we mean bar, we mean a, a service area to be able to serve beverages onsite as well. And then, from a sustainability perspective, we think that there's promise of that property being a bit more sustainable by going solar in the future. The fact that the barns are there and the height of the property and the way the technology around solar is moving forward, our ability to kind of give back and become even more sustainable in the future. So, what are we asking for from the village? Asking from all of you today is annexation into the village of Plainfield with special use conditions around a liquor license and a business permit to operate this type of venue. Subdivision of the property into a five acre residential area, which would include the access drive and then nine acres of agricultural land, all of that being annexed into the village. And then, for consideration for the history of the, of the property and the structures is what we're asking for today. So, just some projected financials or how we see our investment in the property and why it makes sense for us and frankly, why we think it also makes sense for the village. It's just some, and I list my assumptions over on the right-hand side on what the market bears today in a lot of these categories. Majority of these estimates are at the market and are slightly below. And we're talking 42 events in year one, looking at a June 1st of 2017 opening. Again, that's, that's projected at this stage in the game. And then, kind of a breakdown, roughly 30% of our sales being beverage sales, including alcoholic beverages, some additional revenue that we would see from people that we work with and contract with. And then, 179,000 in annual revenue just from the use of the actual barn itself, from the rental. And then, in year two, obviously having a full year, roughly 70 events at the property and an annual revenue of 485. In both, in both assumptions and both projections, beverage is left roughly 30% of the sales. And the assumptions over here to the right, those are only based upon Friday and Saturday use. And not that we would want to be necessarily restricted, but our residence is also on the property as well, right? So, we're not looking to operate something here seven days a week at this stage. And then, actions taken, so we've already worked with David and Lisa Schmidt, they would be the architects for the project moving forward. So, we've got a very clear plan on exactly where it's heading. I've got a carpenter and general contractor that I've worked with in the past that has a passion and an understanding for this type of project that I would like to work with as well as my support. And then, of course, within the village, we've had some conversations around this type of project with fire protection and of course, planning with John. So, that's our review for this evening. Sir, questions we can answer? Thoughts?
I've got several. It's by far the most complete presentation I've seen in 11 years on the board. From a business perspective, you obviously have given a lot of thought to this, which is good. Questions I've got though, a barn is not the best insulated. Nothing said anything about insulating it. I assume you're gonna have to insulate it substantially for the winter time?
So, we anticipate only operating into November and starting in April. So, no operation during what you'd consider your core winter months and obviously only heating and cooling the facility as needed during those months. So, not, you know, for instance, on Tuesdays, we won't be running the air out there by any means, right in the middle of the summertime. So, from an insulation perspective, I think we find that difficult, as much as I'd like to tell you, yes, because I know from a code perspective, that'd be good. The truth of the matter is, the beauty of the barn is the double-layer wood which is there, right, so.
You showed tables there, you're talking about a bar, you're gonna feed people, you don't, it's not a restaurant, obviously, but.
No, it's not a restaurant.
Could have catered food?
Catered food would be brought in, not that it would be the first choice, but you know, there's always the, the beloved taco truck and, and hamburger stand that can come in as well. But frankly, we take that very seriously. We talked about how we would partner, so we'd want vendor agreements with anybody that we brought onsite.
So, you're not just renting the space for the other 70% of your income. Food and so on is gonna be a good part of that.
Well, no, we don't anticipate, outside of the fact of having a partner that would bring that onsite, we want no responsibility for food service whatsoever. It would be catered events.
70% then is rentals, renting, renting the space?
Yes.
That's a challenge. It's certainly something that we could use and you certainly thought through and you have the background to make it work, so I'd love to see you give it a try.
You know, Mr. Watson and Mrs. Watson, this is really, you know, I, I was thinking about some of the things that you had said and it, to me, it's really exciting to blend Plainfield historic past with an exciting future. And this is really, as other trustee Lamb said, you know, really a great presentation, it's really wide, it's very spectrum. The one thing I have to ask though, in our graphic description, it said special event venue. Are you planning, this is only a specific question, are you planning any music venues? I'm not saying we're gonna have a wood stock out there, but you have nine acres of property behind. Are you envisioning something of that nature?
No, so, we actually envision some restrictions on the barn even to acoustic music and what's called DJ, right? Or live music, all of it within side of the barn. And we don't anticipate outside of an acoustic guitarist on the north side of the barn, which is away from the residences, particularly mine, that we would have an acoustic guitarist or something like that outside.
Okay.
No, 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 no live music as far as we're concerned on the exterior of the barn whatsoever.
In our discussion continually of special use, your uses have to become very specific in what you're going to, in the future, instead of saying, oh, I'd like to add this on sometime in the future. You'll understand that. And just a very last question, have you had any dealings with the Plainfield Historic Society, our Historic Commission and discussing perhaps how they could blend their ideas with yours?
Yeah.
Maybe turning it into maybe a, a community situation also?
Yeah. So, we have, so I've spoken with Mike and I've spoken with him on a number of occasions in the past. And frankly, why we chose the architect that we chose has to do with a blend of that as well, right? So, he's done some of the work and if I'm correct, he's doing the work on the trolley barn right now, or did the work on the drawings on the trolley barn. Unfortunately, from a historic society perspective, that property is not within the Plainfield Historic Society. So, I have to deal with the state. We have contacted the state, frankly, we tapped the brake on a couple of things until this meeting to understand the possibilities, but in trying to add that from a state perspective and then from a local historic perspective, also adding that to it as well, right?
I'd like to add a, a name that you could perhaps contact, an individual named Michael Bortel.
Yep.
He's in our audience tonight and perhaps at the end of the meeting. After your presentation, you could meet with him and, you know, share ideas one way or another. If you come into Plainfield, you'll be having contact with those individuals.
Great.
If you're annexed in, so currently, no, but if you're annexed in, yes.
Great, thank you.
And thank you for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
I was just gonna say, I, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, it's a beautiful setup out there, I think you're gonna do really nice things. The one concern is obviously the, the subdivision that backs up to that property there. And have you met with anyone over there or has anyone approached you on this or from the subdivision itself, like the homeowners association?
Yeah, so we haven't at this time. We understand that's next steps for us. We do know that there are nine residences and 10 properties that back directly up to it, along with a number of them that are owned still by Chatham Square. Frankly, one of our concerns is if you want me to tie into city sewer and water, the closest city sewer and water for me is in that subdivision. This property sits two tenths of a mile off of Heggs Road. I'm sure you can imagine when we start trenching, it's a lot of money to get to the, to get to that barn. So, you know, some, I think some thoughts need to happen around that, but we have not gone down that road. We understand that a number of those are vacant, we're probably talking to six families at this stage in the game that are directly up against it. Chatham Square, obviously has some lots and a retention pond that back up to the property on the west side. And then, of course, Anita and Keith Drinkall have a sister that owns the property to the north of it, so.
Okay.
We understand that process would have to happen from us.
There's another facility in town as well that's even, got even more homes around it and they're doing just fine. They, they've kind of come up with the same kind of concept of thinking of keeping music inside, different things like that, managing it quite well. And that's, that's presented no problem in the neighborhood at all, so I, I would have no problem believing that you would handle this the right way, is based on your presentation. So, I would totally support this project.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So, you mentioned water, so are you gonna do water and sewer, are you gonna keep it septic and well, or what's the plan for that?
Well, so, this kind of goes back to the sustainable piece. So, for us, like any business plan, it's a matter of cost. So, frankly, I don't have any issue with tying into city sewer and water, if that's one of the contingencies on making this work with the village. Where we get it from is a bit of a concern, because you're probably talking leaps of, from 25 to 50 to 75,000 dollars, depending on where I have to get it from. So, I would say this, if I'm able to, I've got great wells onsite, filtration, understand that I would need a tank system for fire suppression, right, for the, for the system. If I'm allowed to do that, I think that would be the preferred method from a sustainability perspective, keep it the way that it is. If, if it's a need from the village for us to tie in, we're simply interested in, in how we would be able to do that and what our options would be directionally. So, there's, there's water in, literally on three sides of this, of this lot, in front, on the subdivision side, and then in the back also drawn from the subdivision.
I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I just think you said roughly what, 175 people and you mentioned drinks and everything else, I just.
Yeah.
Lot of probably toilets being flushed and I'm not sure what kind of septic handles that kind of, well, that's all.
Yeah, I, I would say from where it sits today, which we've done some research around that, it, it would need at least a second tank, the field could probably support it. And from a well perspective, there are two active wells, eight-inch wells onsite, right, so, that's something we could no doubt discuss.
The other thing I don't think that was mentioned was the, the parking. What's your, do you have some kind of a preliminary parking plan for the 175?
Oh, I do, but I don't have it drawn, right? The north side of the property, when you take the lane, and I'm happy to show you a video of this property if it helps people with some visuals, I have a video as well. But if you look at it from, can you click back on me? If you, if you look down this side of the property, basically, we would own roughly 70 feet off that grass line of this area down, put it right down in front, I'll show it to you again, right?
Could you keep the mic with you, sir?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
So, um.
You can take it off.
That's okay, thank you. So, there, there's your visual, right? So, water behind, meaning ponds, but also the ability to draw water from that area. And then, I'll kind of walk you back through. So, on the north end of the property, north of the lane, as we come back around, there's about 70 feet off the grass line that, that is also part of the property. We envision, one, from the way the property looks and presents itself from the curb, and then also considering the residents that are already next to me, that parking would be down that, down that north side of the property is where we, we would plan parking. And frankly, we, from a space perspective, it's roughly 70. And frankly, we, from a space perspective, it's roughly 70 by 1,000 feet that would seemingly be available for parking expansion on that side.
North of that access drive?
Yeah.
And I guess, the other trustee brought it up, and I'll just reiterate it, I'm guessing that buffering and fencing with the existing residents would be an issue that it sounds like you're willing to address. And then from, I guess from your perspective, what is the value of, I guess, you annexing if you're going to stick with the sewer or septic and well?
Well, one, we came to partner with the village, right? And two, you know, we felt that that may be the best thing to do for the property. So again, more than anything, just discussion around weighing options. I think our initial plans were that it would be a request of you for us to hook into city sewer and water, and then of course, the permitting as well, and to bring this property into the village, I think makes, makes sense for the village, so.
Well, I guess, have you talked to the county level and asked about your specific use? Would that be allowable currently today?
So the county, yes. We reviewed all of this with them. I shouldn't say at this level. We reviewed the proposal to do something like this, and they stated that frankly, working directly with the village, considering how close we were to the village, would make more sense. We started with the county, obviously, that's where it resides today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that Ariel does a lot of justice to your project. It's a beautiful property, and the presentation you put on tonight was great. It did answer one of my questions as far as where would your residence be in location to the barn? And it looks like it's going to be right in between the existing subdivision and the proposed venue.
Correct.
I would like to see you hook into city water and have city services and annex and all that. That's, you know, I'm a pro-business guy, and I'd love to see you in the village.
Right.
I'm definitely in support of this.
Trustee Lamb had pointed out, this is a very well-prepared presentation, and I definitely wish you the best. I want to see this project move forward. I am leaning on the side of hooking up to, you know, our village water and everything else. And if that's not feasible immediately, if there is something that could be incorporated where you have to do it within X amount of time, if you need a year of revenue in order to be able to afford it, you know, I understand how money goes, you know, starting up a new business venture. But I would like to see an end result, you know, within a year or whatnot, that you're, you know, hooked up to city water. Great architects, obviously. You'd, you know, shown some of the work and the preparation for the project. As another trustee had mentioned, we already have a similar venue, and I've been to a one in a neighboring community that as well is located on a farm, and they've had some really nice, different, you know, weddings, graduation parties, and everything else. So I'd really like to see it move forward, and I support your project. And those are my comments tonight. Thanks for all your hard work, and I definitely wish you luck in this venture.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I would just make a comment, sir. Your presentation was excellent. I've been on the board for a number of years, and it's the first time an individual has brought forth such a detailed presentation to us, and so, much appreciated.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Hopefully you got the feedback that you were looking for. John will, and Alan will schedule some more meetings with you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Next item on the agenda is strategic plan studies.
Thank you very much. So for this item, we're, I'm going to talk for just a little bit while we do a computer switch over here as well. But we, staff is very excited for the potential to move forward with two additional studies that would help us advance several of the objectives of the ongoing strategic plan process. We've invited S.B. Friedman and Company to provide us with the scope of work for each of these studies. One relates to general housing planning for the foreseeable future, really getting a handle on what the current trends are in the housing industry and the housing market, economic factors that will shape housing demand, and trying to get a good understanding what the village's housing needs will be within our strategic planning horizon. And that is a discreet, specific objective of our strategic planning effort. The second study is related to the village-owned property that's located east of Van Dyke Road and south of 143rd Street. And this would be to provide kind of market feasibility studies and some recommendations on, on what potential land uses would be viable on the village-owned property, and some conceptual land plans for how those land uses would, would play out, and the capacity for, for those uses. So at this time, staff has invited S.B. Friedman and Company to provide a brief overview. There are two proposals, so we're going to kind of take them one at a time, and pause for a kind of questions, discussion from the board on each one, and then we'll advance to the second. So at this time, I'd like to invite, introduce Lance Dorn, project manager with S.B. Friedman and Company. And Lance can provide us with an overview of each of the proposals.
John mentioned, my name is Lance Dorn. I'm a project manager, can you hear this, right? With S.B. Friedman Development Advisors. We are an economic development and real estate advisory firm in our 26th year of business. We really work at the intersection of urban planning and real estate development, and real estate economics, particularly market feasibility studies like I am proposing today is really one of our core services. We do have a history working here in Plainfield. As you may know, we are involved with the TIF designation and redevelopment strategy along the Route 30 corridor as well, pardon me, as well. So I'm here today to discuss two new engagements. The first, as John mentioned, is the market feasibility and site assessment for the village-owned parcel on Van Dyke Road, just southeast of 143rd Street. The second is a village-wide comprehensive housing study that really looks at the supply and demand of housing here in Plainfield over the next several years. Through the next few slides, I'm going to introduce you to our proposed scope of services, and then open it up for discussion, hopes of getting any feedback from, from the board. So we will begin with the Van Dyke Road market feasibility and site assessment. The purpose of the study is to evaluate the suitability of the site for redevelopment, to identify types of private development that may be attracted to the site, and develop site capacity, concept plans for that market feasibility, feasible development that we identify. Our approach would be to conduct a physical conditions assessment of the site, as well as a market assessment and key informant interviews to determine what market feasible uses may be. We will begin by evaluating factors that may impact development, such as the site's location, accessibility, visibility, adjacencies, parcel size, to really evaluate and determine the suitability of the site for specific land uses. We will evaluate market potential for uses that align with the village's goals of revenue generation, both through land sales and real estate tax generation, as well as job creation. To do this, we will conduct key informant interviews and analyze current real estate trends in the market, including the location and type of new development, rents, occupancy, and absorption. Ultimately, all of this information will be used to assess demand for new product type. Given the site, size of the site, there may also be the opportunity to explore creative public-private partnerships that really help to achieve some of the village's goals, particularly in terms of job creation, as this may not be, I would say, the prime site for industrial development. But there's certainly ways in which we could achieve some of those goals. Once we have determined a market feasible uses for the site, we will work with a planning, a physical planning firm called Ginkgo Planning and Design that we have worked with on many engagement, many engagements, to determine the physical capacity of the site, evaluate connectivity and the context with surrounding parcels, to identify strategic locations for public uses, as well as land for storm water retention, and identifying areas that should be preserved as environmentally sensitive areas. We will then work with Ginkgo to prepare massing-level site concept plans for market feasible uses. And our deliverable will ultimately be a planning-level briefing document that hopefully will guide the village in its policy as it considers development, and ultimately, the disposition of the site. So that was just a brief overview of our scope. I just wanted to open it up then to any comments or questions from the board.
Now, I find myself in a very unusual position of, I like, ordinarily, I like to see studies, but I'm not sure I can support this one. The rationale, I think in part, is we get 143rd Street through, it's going to change the dynamics for this particular area. Until we have that, or know when it's going to occur, I'm not sure a study of the current situation will be meaningful. We've had a number of people come in and propose to do things with this property. Nothing's really happened with it yet. Part of the problem is, you know, getting funding for it. And I don't think the study's going to give us funding. We've actually funded a number of studies to encourage people to come into Plainfield. This one is even farther downstream than some of those things. And so I, I'm not sure that I can support near-term this makes sense. Oh, a different comment on the next one, but as far as this particular property, we've had it for quite a while. People looked at it, people know it's available. We've actually had designs, the other room on the other side of the hall, where we laid out how we would utilize this property. Nothing's happened for many of that, so I appreciate, I usually like to support studies, but we have a history of studies that get put on a shelf, and I, unfortunately, I think this may be one of them. I don't know that it's the right time. I think maybe a couple of years from now, if we know 143rd Street's going through, it might make some sense, because then we got a different dynamic in place. Right now, we're, it's a handicap. One of the things impacts, first item, what is the impact? Well, transportation's a problem in that area. If we can eliminate that, then you got yourself, in my mind, a study, what do we do with this property? But we're not there yet. So, sorry, I can't, I don't support it at this point in time.
I'm in agreement. I don't necessarily agree on this portion of the study at this time. He's right, 143rd coming through changes the connectivity of the whole area, the whole, that whole vicinity. I mean, it's, I don't feel comfortable spending the money now for something that we've been working towards a few years from now. Maybe in a couple of years, but not, not right now.
I had a question on, on the whole thing, is that what's the likelihood we recoup the cost that we put into this if we did approve it? That's a big consideration, because we do a lot of these different things to see how things are going to work, and we've tried to do things over the years, and, you know, how do we recoup the cost that we put into the study itself? We can't just say this is part of doing business, because it's not that clear. So I'm kind of, kind of in agreement where the other two trustees are at this point.
Well, to that point, if you don't mind me just adding a little bit, the village originally bought the 58-acre parcel with the intent that the Star Line would be coming through and make that available for parking. And the study that you did, and practice that you did across the hallway, was very worthwhile with the idea of developing a transportation-oriented design where folks would live near the train station, walk to the train station, then go to wherever they work. With the changes in, in the status on the Star Line, which is essentially, we've been advised years ago to remove it from even our comprehensive plan, it does change the dynamic for what that property was originally purchased. You may be right that we are a little bit early and premature in bringing this forward to the board for consideration, but what we wanted to do was take a look at ideas and concepts for how to redevelop that property that are actually based in what the economics can be for that property. This isn't just, and I'm not, don't take my just as a, as a knock against the previous study, but this is more designed around what kinds of employment opportunities could be provided on that property, either with or without the 143rd Street extension going through. I think we all would recognize and realize that even with the 143rd Street extension, it's highly unlikely that we would see a distribution center or a very large employment-type operation there. Rather, there probably are some other opportunities for us to explore. And what we wanted to do is try to find out what would be those highest and best uses for that property in that more, you know, near term, and, and find out whether or not there's any marketability for that property as well. That's why we are looking for S.B. Friedman, rather than going through the traditional role of using urban planning. And then from there, we could come up with a marketing strategy to talk about how to go forward with the property. You're right, we've had some fits and starts with it. That's why, you know, from staff's point of view, we wanted to present to you a chance to do something a little bit more with this. It is something that came out during the community-wide strategic planning sessions that we had with the board, is what do we do with this property? So that's why we, as well, we're bringing that forward. But again, if it's too early, that by all means, I can't disagree with you that it might be a little premature, but while we were meeting with Friedman on what is part B, we thought it'd be appropriate to have a conversation with the part A piece as well. So.
Going with what the other trustees had said, I'm going to be on, you know, on the same page. I think it may be premature, and I don't see us obtaining the ROI on this investment anytime soon. Possibly in two, three, five years, this may be more palatable for me if I'm on the board at that point. But I'm definitely going to want to take a pass on doing this particular study at this point, from my perspective. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Dorn, thank you for your study and your presentation to the board. Mr. Murphy said premature, and I think that's really a cogent word. It is premature, and, but even if we were to continue with it, and then we'll take this premature study and put it on the shelf, like we've done so many in the past, and I have a proliferation of studies that are on shelves, and I don't want this, I don't want to invest our money into a study that is going to go on a shelf. I think we should do it when the demand is much more visible than it is right today. Thank you.
Well, I guess I've heard the word premature mentioned several times, and I guess my concern is the doc, the background I'm looking at says 2006, so roughly 10 years we've owned it. So I don't know how much longer we want to keep waiting. I mean, what did we end up paying for 58 acres?
$7.5 million.
$7.5 million. So that has just been basically sitting there. So I don't know that I necessarily agree with the plan. I, I mean, I'm not sure, the marketability, if I understand what you're trying to do is figure out what the highest and best use would probably be for that land, right? Now, that's great, but if nobody wants to build that or buy it and build that, it doesn't really help us. So I'm more kind of, I think we should do something today, it's already been 10 years. I don't know if the studies gets us there, or if we just need to start marketing the property aggressively. I don't know the answer to that. But I wouldn't necessarily be against the study if it gets us to a point where we can do something with that property.
Well, and to, and you're absolutely right on Mark, trustee O'Rourke, that was what we were looking to do, was determine, do you try to sell it as one large piece? Do we break it down so that it's multiple different-sized lots and the like, based on what that market can necessarily do? And that's why we are taking a look toward Friedman to help us with that. They aren't just looking at it from an urban planning point of view about what blocks can you fit on this, but rather as well, what that marketability can do for trying to sell the property. As well then, to explore the idea of doing possibly some public-private partnerships, to try to look at some other different ways to encourage job development and encourage economic growth out there.
I think that's a great idea, if we could look at that.
That's why we thought about, that's the idea for, behind the study.
So, but there's some other pieces, I think, that fall maybe into this, and I don't have all the background, but I know there's been plans that the village has talked about, in other words, the pace lot. I don't know if that's got any traction. So if that were to happen, and then you would carve out some of those pieces, that will reduce the scope. I know there's talk about maybe the Pima building ending up out there at some point, you know, that would reduce some more of the property. So I don't know, do we have enough of those answers for them to move forward with what's going to be left, or what we want to utilize, or?
Yeah, we explored both of those issues with Lance and with the team from Friedman to, to, to work around those issues. But as well, and that was part of it too, was to make sure that we weren't putting the, you know, whether it's the lot or the Pima building, let's not put them on the best and highest pieces of property necessarily. How do we develop that site so that we are placing those buildings appropriately so that we aren't jeopardizing future growth as well?
You know, one last point that I'd like to make is, we speak of best use. You know what? I feel that we have a staff, we have a planning department, we have an administration, we have an individual who works on development, commercial development. I think we have a board of trustees who can define best use. I think we have a board of trustees who can define best use. We have talked about it in the past, and I think we should use our own resources to define best use. In addition to that, to give a historical reference, when we purchased this property, a couple of the board members were on the board and voted to purchase this property. That was at a dynamic time when the entire economy was booming. Star Line almost gave us a sledgehammer and some nails, some ties in order to start the train line through Plainfield. Of course, it was a good move at that time. No one could predict what was going to happen. Our American economy went into a tailspin, housing practically stopped, future development stopped. So someone, someone said to me, "Well, that was really stupid, you buying that." At the time, it was a good decision and we were told it was a good decision and we made a good decision at the time. We have the property, now we have to live with it and we can make the best of it. I hopefully will be able to make the best of it. It's a choice piece of property and Plainfield is growing and it will be used. And we'll have to come up with the best use for it. Thank you.
Sounds to me like the, the staff, the village administrator have ideas for this property. And my, my point of contention is if they have ideas, well, let's use those ideas and not necessarily pay a firm to either solidify or to change those ideas. Our staff are all competent, competent people and I don't think that, I think it's a waste of money at this juncture.
I guess I need, just need to comment, you know, about whether the purchase was a correct purchase or not, whether anybody could see the future. My only concern with that is I think back when the Star Line was being considered, if I understand the property, I think we needed ten acres for the Star Line. Was that what the total size was?
I don't recall the number, but we're looking at about ten acres on parking currently.
Right, so, so we needed roughly ten acres and we bought fifty-eight for seven and a half million.
In defense though of the, the folks that were involved in those negotiations, I wasn't part of the negotiations, but I do have the pleasure of getting to look back on history. When we approached the family that owned that farm, we had already approached them once, once before for access to have a road to our wastewater treatment plant. And they said, "If you, if you were interested in another piece, would you just buy the whole thing?" And, and so that was why that decision was made, that they would only have an interest in selling the entire parcel. And, you know, the economy being what it was at the time, I can see the logic behind why they purchased it the way that they did. And they paid a fair price for what the market was at that time. We're, we just, it is just something that we're dealing, you know, it's a, it's a parcel we have to work around now.
Oh, but, and maybe I don't understand, but does the village not have the authority for eminent domain? So in other words, if they wanted to carve the ten piece, ten acres out of fifty-eight acres, they could have, correct?
Again, that would be me going back in time to figure out.
I'm just saying, some people, you know, I, I, I didn't bring up, I didn't bring up the topic about how great of an opportunity or of a purchase this was, that's all.
Well, I was part of the decision to purchase it and I thought it was a good decision at the time. We were interested in the Star Line, they had a spot for a station and we're going to make a transportation development around that, which happened, a lot of other places around train stations have had a lot of active development. That was our intent at the time. We didn't know the economy was going to crash in two thousand and eight. But as Brian said, we either had to buy the whole thing or whatever. We don't use eminent domain very often, I don't think we've ever used it in Plainfield, have we?
You know, trustee O'Rourke, you are alluding to the fact, why didn't we buy ten acres out of fifty-plus acres? You know what, I always fall back on an old idiom, a saying is hindsight's always one hundred percent accurate. And you're using hindsight to come up with justification for us not purchasing ten acres versus fifty. And like I say, it's always a hundred percent accurate to look historically back. Unfortunately, we don't have the option to do that right now. So I think we have to work with what we have currently and move forward. And I think that's a positive effort. Thank you.
So I'm getting the direction that we're a little early on this one and we'll revisit that one at a future date. Mr. Prue?
Thank you.
So I would suggest we reopen it if we get one hundred and forty-third Street. We know if we're going ahead with that, I think it makes, it's a dynamic that changed the whole thing. So if we can get, if that been passed this year, it'd be different, but I don't know when it's going to happen, so unfortunately. But it's a good, good study, but not yet, in my opinion.
Thank you. So switching gears, we, we also have a proposal and a proposed scope of work that would assist the village, both staff and our elected officials in understanding where the current housing market is, our inventory of existing housing stock, what the future housing needs will be within the village of Plainfield, taking a look at what housing trends are, what, what home types, future home buyers will be looking for, and kind of understanding economic trends, job trends, and, and what will drive the, the demand for housing in the future and what that housing market would look like specifically for the village of Plainfield. So once again, Lance can walk us through that proposed scope of work for the, the second study that again was requested at staff's direction.
All right, as, as John mentioned, our second proposal is for a village-wide comprehensive housing study. The purpose of the study is really to understand how both the existing housing stock and the proposed housing that is in the development pipeline aligns with both the current need for housing within Plainfield as well as the projected at defined points out in the future. So we have been doing several of these studies recently because there really, it has been a significant amount of new development proposed within the past few years. And there are certainly concerns of municipalities regarding overbuilding of housing product, particularly in terms of apartments. How, one thing that is important to note that as municipalities are concerned about this potential overbuilding, it is a real concern because lenders that we have spoken to recently have indicated that financing for specific types of real estate development product, particularly apartments, is really tightening, which is a sign that demand for certain product types is slowing and is therefore, there are concerns in the market of overbuilding of specific product types. So the purpose of this study is really to help the, the village understand true demand for residential housing, not just based on the current surge of specific real estate product types within the market. So this is looking at current housing needs, the existing population, what their housing preferences are, and is looking at projected growth, national trends in, in real estate as well as economic impacts to the housing market. So we would begin our analysis by developing a demographic profile of the existing residents. We would look at trends in age and income, whether your municipality is aging, whether there's a certain influx of specific age groups, and then reconcile that with both the current preferences for housing by that age and income as well as national trends in terms of, say, the current trend, which is the, really a focus more on multifamily development and the move towards the rental market. We will also identify a comprehensive inventory of both the existing housing stock and the proposed housing supply, assess real estate market trends in terms of absorption, occupancy and housing prices to develop what we're calling a housing need and demand model. So this will include all of those trends and demographic information that we would have produced as part of the step that I just described, incorporate national housing trends as well as the existing economy, both in Plainfield and the greater area, to identify how growth in specific employment sectors would be impacting housing development within Plainfield. We would pull all this information together. We would incorporate discussions with real estate professionals in terms of demand for specific housing types. Our demand model will identify unmet housing, housing needs for specific populations and income groups and people looking for specific pricing for housing to develop a demand profile for specific housing types over multiple analysis periods to really determine and guide the village's policy in terms of residential growth. So a project that we did recently in Wisconsin, we identified three time periods that they wanted to analyze in terms of growth to determine specifically what types of housing stock would be needed to accommodate the growth that is projected to occur at those specific time periods. So for this analysis, which we're showing up here in this table on the upper right corner, really breaks down by type of housing unit, whether it's single-family, townhomes, multifamily units. And over an analysis period that we will work with village staff to identify a projected number of units that would be needed based on true demand, meaning projected growth in households. So we would reconcile these existing and proposed housing supply with this identified demand to prepare a document that outlines this true demand for each specific product type. And as I mentioned, the use of this document would be then to guide policy in terms of residential development as the village moves forward over the next several years. So I'll open that up to discussion.
I feel similar to this as I did to our previous agenda item. And if we were to pay you thirty-plus thousand dollars to tell us we don't need apartments, I think we're wasting our money because I'd rather not see any more apartments in the village anyways. If we pay you thirty-plus thousand dollars to tell us that we need more apartments, I'm probably still going to vote against the apartments anyway. Okay, so I guess I'm looking for the value in this and I'm not seeing it. In addition, gosh, you know, this is really a tough one for me to, I have a vision for Plainfield. And when we have different developers come in front of us and builders that have a proposal, we have our own opinions, our own philosophy and our own promises that we've made to, you know, the community when we ran for office. And if your study goes completely against that, you know, I'm still going to go with what I promised the community. So for us to spend thirty-plus thousand dollars to be told what, you know, another organization thinks we should build or shouldn't build in Plainfield, I'm having a hard time with it. So that, that's where I'm at with this. I'd like to take a pass on this particular study as well. Yeah, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
We actually were looking at it from a slightly different point of view, that it would allow for us to work with the local builders and even more of the regional and possibly national builders at attracting the kind of product line that you'd like to have come to our community that's consistent with what the market will bear. As you know, we've had a number of different builders and developers come to us, you know, as mentioned, you know, the project won't happen unless we get apartments tied to it, which we've said no to. And as Lance had pointed out, there's been a lot of tightening on what's happening with that institutional money at this point. But at the same time, there has been, there have been calls for lesser lot sizes and the like and that these projects, these won't go forward unless you give us certain concessions and the like. And what we're trying to get to is instead find that the product line that you want to see has a, has a certain marketability within your, within our community that you, you aren't necessarily just having to listen to what the developers and builders are suggesting can be done here, but rather that you have some empirical data on what can actually happen and so that you know what, you know, when somebody else is talking with you about what can and can't happen, you actually have some information to rely on that is driven by strict economic and empirical data.
Okay, I see your side of it, Brian. I guess my response would be, what's to stop a developer or builder from doing their own study and showing, improving to us that, well, I'd rather let them spend the thirty thousand dollars and have an outside organization go with a study that supports their proposed project than have us float the thirty thousand dollars in hopes that, you know, it helps us, I guess, as a whole with, you know, with, with developments.
Again, it's just a question of, of, you know, we can be proactive and go out and try to encourage the kind of development that will succeed here or we can wait till they come on in. I think that was more the, the attitude that we were having through the community-wide strategic plan. Again, we were, we were hearing from the community that they, they wanted to have a sense of being able to make sure that we maintained and encouraged our community and the, the values that are here. And we didn't want to have a project that was skirting at the edges. I noticed John was about ready to say something too, so I'm obviously missing a very salient reason why we looked at this, so.
No, no, I was just hoping to add, you know, my, my input in, in terms of where I see the value in, in the study. And again, this is information that, you know, staff would be excited to have and feel there would be strong value to. In the, in the context of the strategic plan discussions, there were a couple of points that really prompted us to, to invite this, the scope of work in this proposal. One was understanding kind of comprehensively village-wide what the housing needs are and maybe in the coming years for, for us to understand and not to have a developer tell us at a specific location, "Hey, here's the housing need and it just so happens that this is what we want to build," you know. So the recommendations that would come forth from this effort would not lead the village down a path to say, "This is what needs to be built here." If there's a demand for a type of housing that is not consistent with the village board's vision, with our community's vision, then we will understand that, we'll know that in advance. But I, I do think it's very important that the number of housing starts and the projected housing growth, the impact that that has on us as a village financially planning for in the future, from a staff perspective, economically, just to understand. So for example, in, in five years' time, part of this effort will analyze, what's the economy going to look like? Are, are there, is there going to be job growth? Is there going to be job stagnation? Is there going to be job loss? How, how does that affect the demand for housing? So it's really an informed look from the experts on what the housing industry will be and how, how we can shape our policy to either accommodate that growth or to recognize that we're only going to capture a portion of that growth. And that portion is, is what's our, our consensus vision for, for the future village of Plainfield. It would not be dictated by the study.
I think those are some very, you know, valid responses. I'm going from a very hard no to a soft no and I'll yield to the rest of the board and go with what the rest of the board, you know, is going to want here.
Let me bring up something which the mayor may remember. As I recall, we were across the hall and CMAP or the mayor's caucus came in and they were doing a residential study on Plainfield. Whatever happened to that study and how far back was it?
It's what the rest of the study did mention.
Well, I was impressed with what they were doing and it seems a lot like what we're trying to do here. And, you know, it may be a little outdated now, but on the other hand, they seem to have an awful lot of basic data. And from what I recall, I haven't seen a study since the presentation that was there, but I'd like to consider doing that. I, also in the category of probably a soft no, because I think one of the people, we can talk to the realtors if you want, but I think the banks are controlling what goes on. I'd rather see us spend some time talking to the banks, they're tightening up on apartments, thank heavens, because we certainly don't want more apartments. We had a proposal last time that was backed up by a study that said, "Oh, we got to have rental units kitty-corner from here." You know, didn't appeal to us, it's not what we have in mind. These, again, based on, they said, "Well, anything other than rental units, not, we wouldn't suggest you spend your money on it," you know. Question is, what are you going to do with this? I understand what you said and what you would like to do with it. How effective it's doing that is the question I have. I like information as well as anybody, but if there's other stuff around, I would dig up some of the old stuff, maybe take a look at it. I'm not adamantly opposed to it, but I'm not excited about the project because I'm not sure it'll pay off for us.
I'd just like to bring up, I'd like to see an independent study as this is. Rather than having a developer come in and say, "This is what you really need. You need these condominiums, you need these townhouses." You shouldn't have, you should have smaller lots, you should have larger lots or whatever. But I'd like an independent to look at it more than a developer because we've had developers come before us and say, "This project can go forward and we have studies to prove it." We have another one come before us and say, "No, that project won't work here." So I'd like an independent to take a look at it and then just give us a foundation of what we should be looking at.
I, I would, I would agree with that. That's one of the comments I wrote down, that independent, because I think when developers come in, they're a little biased. And I'm guessing, you know, when they pay, when they're paying somebody's bill, I'm guessing the person creating the, the product is a little biased as well, so. And the way, what I'm taking away from this is it's not necessarily what's going to necessarily happen in Plainfield, but it seems to me it's, it would be a good tool for staff to what they would present and encourage the developers to come forward with. So not necessarily what they would do, but at least we would have a plan of encourage them. And, you know, I, I still would like to know, and I think it would be helpful with this plan, to kind of see what our housing stock, our current is and what we could look at. Because I think any community, you know, moving forward to be healthy, needs a diversity housing stock to support all levels, people beginning, people retiring. housing stock to support all levels, people beginning, people retiring, people getting divorced, you know, multifamilies, you know, all different levels. And I don't know that we have that currently in our, in our community. And then lastly, I would say that, you know, we might have some old studies, but times have changed and they changed very quickly. I think, you know, there's a lot of thoughts around millenniums. Millenniums are, you know, sleeping in mom's basement. Well, I just read some other reports that said, no, millenniums are buying houses like crazy now. And everybody thought, you know, housings were going to continue to shrink in size forever. Well, guess what? Houses are getting bigger again. So I mean, you know, the effect of the recession is starting to wear off and we're starting to see new trends. And I think that's what your study would probably start to show us. So I would support it.
I guess the thing about some of the parts of your, your proposal here is working, talking with developers and the real estate people, that is absolutely not going to be unbiased by any means, because we've sat in on committees, and Bill can attest to this too, where we, where we, when we were doing review, revisioning of the comp plan as a subcommittee, there was quite spirited, I would say, discussions when we're, because the developer, to the points of the other trustees that made, are going to come in with what they want to do. We, I, I think the fact that you're standing here saying that the banks are tightening up on apartment buildings is unbelievable when everybody has come through this door has told us that, well, we're going to do apartments and single-family homes. So we're doing the apartments first because, and then you know what's going to happen there. They won't be able to sell their single-family homes and what more. So, I mean, it's just, and we've said no as a board to almost all that. I think, I think the concept of looking at this study is possibilities. I don't think the way it's presented right now, it does. And I think some of the costs are a little out of whack, to be perfectly honest with you, on a couple of the breakdowns here. So I, I would, this would have to really be looked at again and I don't know if this is, you know, tonight, I would not say yes.
By two cents, nobody can predict the next five years as far as job growth or stagnation. They have a new administration in January with new economic ideas. New regulatory rulings will come out, so I don't think now is the time for that. Regardless of what the study says, if the study said we needed, we are at a, a loss for apartments and we needed an influx, a massive amount of apartments, if the study did say that, I guarantee it would not pass on the current board. So it would be resounding no. So I don't see the value in putting in the money to a study that is not necessarily going to be followed, or it may be followed, but it's at the, the elected officials are responsible for deciding which way the village goes. And if the people in the village are unhappy with the way the elected officials are, are doing things, they will vote them out to get a change. I don't see the, the wisdom in spending money on a study to tell me which way I should vote. Essentially, that's, that's what the study is for, to guide the village in policy. I mean, the, the staff, the competent staff, we, they know how many houses we have. You guys approved the occupancy permits, so the current housing stock, we know what the current housing stock is. Again, I don't see the wisdom and it wouldn't be a soft no for me, it'd be a hard no for me at this point.
One more comment about developers, just to put it in perspective. Yeah, they do indeed come to tell us what they want to do, but it's invariably, that's, nobody's got enough money to do it anymore. So it's where they can get the money to put in. So somehow they're convincing the bankers, this is a good idea. I'd like to make sure, if we're going to do this kind of study, we got some sort of banking support that says, hey, if that's what you want to go, we'll throw money into it and help you get there. I don't know that's how we have that discussion with bankers, but it seems to me they're in control because they're tightening things up again. And that's one of the key factors. We can't, problem is, we can't, we don't control what happens with the housing development. As Brian has said many, many times, we're good at stopping people, we're not very good at making people do the right thing. And, you know, unfortunately, I put this in the same category. I don't know how we can make whatever we think's the right thing happen here unless we can provide the money and we're not going to do that, so.
Well, again, we weren't looking at using this as a tool to encourage incentives to developers to do something. Instead, we, we did look at it as a, as an opportunity to have an unbiased opinion and direction on what can happen within our community. And if there are things that don't comport to the direction that you want to go, as John was getting at, much better said than I could ever imagine saying, is that, at least then we have a good idea and understanding of what we can expect to see coming into our community, which then allows for our, our economic development specialists to be able to work with the retail and the commercial business community to talk about what type of recruitment can come, come in through, through town. So we kind of saw it as a hand-in-hand, but it, again, it looks as though perhaps there isn't a strong support from the board at this point, unless I change the minds of...
Let me go from a soft no to kind of neutral. One of the things that's happened, we had a lot of discussions around...
If we keep talking, we might just win you down.
Well, my, by another perspective though, because we, we have, Jonathan's new in his position, he'd been there, but he was not involved in a lot of, we had a lot of discussions on housing over the last six, seven years at least. Jonathan's new, we're going to have somebody else that's new. We have to kind of bring them up to speed because they weren't necessarily involved in those discussions. So we have a training episode coming up that may be very important. So that's why I come to neutral.
James, any, any, any opinions?
I've got so little to say. You know what, Bill said from a soft no, well, I'm going to go from, I'm going to go to a strong no. You know what? We don't need another study. The last good study we had was, that we voted for and I thought was a great idea, was to find out how many parking spaces we got. But after that, no more studies. I think we've got enough studies. The market's going to dictate who's going to come and present before this board. The board's going to be in a constant flux and what we're saying tonight, in seven months, might be entirely different. New broom sweeps clean and I honestly think that this board shouldn't spend a lot of money on an awful lot of studies that get put on shelves. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a, I'm sorry, a related comment if we're done with that regarding, I guess, the strategic plan. Two topics came on tonight and we're moving forward with it, which I think is great. We got a copy of it, but we didn't really ever talk about it. So if we're not going to chat with the final version, or are we? I don't know. But if not, is it possible to get a red line version that shows kind of what is some of the old stuff and what's the new stuff?
Oh, certainly, yeah. Actually, right, what we did, and that's a great point, you know, perhaps we should have a committee, the whole, to discuss what we brought forward out of that, that'd be a great idea. But generally speaking, we, what we did as staff was took the completed and old, previous material and created one document so that it's more of a static document. And then the other one becomes more of a living document that continues to go on. And that was a brand-new document, so everything in there is, is, well, there was some that was carried over from the other. So perhaps we can put together a committee, the whole, to talk about it.
And then along that line, the, the one item that I noticed was absent that was discussed, and maybe you could have an update, is the quiet zone application. I don't think that made it under the final form.
It didn't make it into the final form because it's more of a ministerial administrative thing, but yeah, Mr. Persons, if you can touch on where we, where we are with that.
I can speak on this briefly, you know, more for the benefit of the public too, as well as the board. We did meet with the city of Joliet, Plainfield Township as well because of the, there's really only one crossing that's under the village's jurisdiction. The other crossing is under, Lockport is under IDOT's jurisdiction, Renwick is under the township's jurisdiction, and then Caton Farm Road is under Joliet's jurisdiction. We did receive concurrence or support from Joliet to partner with the quiet zone application. We did receive concurrence from the township as well to partner and make some improvements as well. So that application is moving forward and it, and it has been, as Administrator Murphy had mentioned, it's, it's more of an internal, we received the direction from the board. We believe that the application will be submitted within the next two months or so and we should have an answer, hopefully within six months or so in that range. So we'll keep the board apprised, but we felt like that this was headed in the right direction. We got some good partners in this and that we're going to move forward with it. So we'll be happy to keep the board apprised.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask one further question? So you mentioned IDOT, but you didn't say whether they were on board or not, or are we leaving that out?
IDOT's in flux right now. We didn't get a, we didn't get a firm commitment from IDOT. We did make the request, but we haven't gotten a commitment from IDOT.
So would the application move forward without that part of it or no?
Certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just in closing, relative to both studies, I think it was very valuable to, you know, receive the input from the trustees in terms of your, your position. I think staff certainly heard and understand, understands where you're at. I think each of the topics is worthwhile and, and we will work with the resources that we have to pursue those objectives and continue our, our efforts. So thank you for the, the open discussion this evening.
Thank you, John, and thank you so much for your presentation. You got to be the lucky person on the hot seat tonight. So thank you.
Reminders?
August 10th is coffee with the mayor, the 11th historical preservation, the 15th would be our next village board meeting, the 16th is our next planning commission, and our next committee, the whole, will be August 22nd.
Taking a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.